... scholarship program. And we are moving forward with figuring out a way for to work with Parks and Rec Department on the downtown tree lighting and what that will look like this year. There have been some great ideas thrown out there about also providing like a live stream option for folks so they for those that can watch from the comfort of their home. And we're going to be meeting with Parks and Rec next week to discuss some ideas. Um, we launched our Mountain Holidays campaign, so we're going to be collecting information as usual from, you know, our down or not downtown, just throughout town retailers and the region. Obviously, events will be down this year for for obvious reasons, but we're still going to promote, you know, shopping local and dining local, you know, takeout and all the other options available to still support our businesses this holiday season. And that will be a digital version this year. Um, Winter Carnival, as you all probably saw with the announcements that we made collectively with our event partners with Central District Health, St. Luke's McCall, and our city departments that are great, great partners for us and work really hard. I'm sure some were relieved to hear that we will not be having the parade. And so any large scale events, the fireworks that encourage large gatherings, that decision was made and also jointly when our governor announced Idaho went back to stage three and limiting events and large gatherings. So we're moving forward with Winter Carnival and promoting other ways that we can celebrate getting back to basics and the great outdoors. And we're trying to amplify the volume of sculptures this year. And we've already had some people reach out to us that haven't done sculptures before that are interested in seeing a state sculpting championship participants would be willing to come over and help out some businesses with some additional sculptures. I know sculptures and artists are getting harder and harder to come by these days. So we hope we can have some extra support. We're still working with the Go Agency and working on logistics and ways to safely do things and organize Winter Carnival this year. Dates are January 29th through February 7th, so it's a little later this year. Um, and we haven't declared a theme yet. We're in the midst of figuring out what's going to inspire us this year. So we're looking for for any input. So if anyone has an idea, feel free to send it our way. But working with our event team right now to come up with something special since it's been a very unique, unique year. So we're moving forward with that. And I ran into Joey Petrie at the post office and he told me to tell you all he'd like to move forward with figuring out a way to buy a bottle glass grinder for our community. He has been a part of our strategic initiatives team and the focus before COVID was recycling. And we've been working and Annette sits on that as well. And I think we kind of brainstormed some ideas, but I think that he's on to something and we want to support him as best we can. And our area, he's talked to area, our member restaurants to try and figure out volume. And he's crunching numbers now and we're trying to come up with creative ways to potentially fund this project. So anyway, recycling still top of mind and I appreciate our community's passion. So that's kind of all I got right now.
Thank you, Lindsey. I'm going to ask council if they have comments or questions for you. Start with Mike.
Thanks, Bob. I don't have any questions. Thanks, Lindsey.
Thank you.
Melanie.
Thanks, Lindsey. I don't have any questions, but thank you very much for the update.
Thank you.
Colby?
No, I don't think I have any questions, Lindsey. You guys are always doing wonderful things. So thanks for the update.
Thanks for the encouragement.
This is Bob. Lindsey, thanks very much. On you, you and your team have been doing great. We're really impressed with how you've handled lots of challenges this last several months. So keep up the good work and keep us posted on things.
Your words mean a lot. Thank you very much.
All righty, our, so the next, the next thing we'll do is go through each department. And council, remember that we, this kind of reminder to me as well, the way we'll work this is we'll start with Annette. And instead of asking her to give us a briefing, we will just start with polling each member of council. So each of you has a chance to either ask questions or clarification or pass along any comments that you have to Annette. We'll start with Mike. City manager report.
Thanks, Bob. Yeah, I don't have any questions.
All right. Melanie?
None for Annette, but thank you.
Melanie? Colby?
Um, I don't really have any questions, I guess. Annette, do you want to let everyone know? And I saw in the report about our meeting with J, the J-WAG meeting coming up next week. Do you want to say anything about that to keep us all pulled in?
Sure. Can you all hear me?
Okay, let me see. Oops, we're going to have a pizza. Hold on.
All right. Can you hear me? Okay. And so in the sewer district and the city staff have worked together to set the next J-WAG meeting, which is Monday, November 9th at 9:00 a.m. That agenda's been posted by the sewer district publicly. And the minutes from the prior meeting in September of 2019 have been circulated to those members. And so we look forward to having our representatives, which are Colby Nielsen, Michelle Grinavell, and Nathan Stewart, at the table with the representatives from the sewer district to talk about the sewer model and density map that they have proposed to develop. So that will happen on the morning.
Thanks. I guess I'm curious if anyone has anything specific when I'm going to be sitting there at the table, if you guys are really excited about this stuff like me.
Are you referring to your fellow council members?
Yeah. I mean, I don't know what, I don't know if we can really discuss anything, but you know, I want to make sure I can go in with any concerns and if you guys want me to ask any questions.
Well, how about if folks have those, they email them to me and then when you and I talk tomorrow, I'll have a list for you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Colby. All right. And I don't have any further questions. Annette, good job on, on your report. We'll go to, let's see. Next up will be Rick Stein, airport manager. Rick, are you on with us tonight?
Unless he has been muted.
Rick Stein, this is Mayor Bob. Are you able to hear us? And if so, could you unmute so I know you're on the line?
Mayor, I can attempt to answer questions on his behalf. You think he's...
Here I am.
Oh, there you are. Okay, go for it, Rick.
Thanks, Rick. We can hear you now. Um, you've probably heard the previous discussion. Well, we'll simply poll the council and ask them if they have any questions concerning the airport. So we'll start with Mike.
I don't have any questions. Thanks.
Melanie?
I have none for Rick tonight, but thank you.
Colby?
None for me tonight. Thanks, Rick.
Rick, this is Bob. Mayor Bob, just give us a two minute update. How are things going? Are you getting everything buttoned up, ready for winter?
Oh, yes. We've got the snow crew all ready to go. So we're, we're all set up for winter and we're moving forward with the projects that we have going at the airport.
Great. And the parallel taxiway stuff, that's pretty well been finished up?
Yes. The, the last little bit of work got done this week and all that's left is some FAA paperwork and the whole project will be done.
Great. Well, good work on that. Good to have, good to have that done. That part, I'm sure there'll be more to come, but thank you. Thank you very much. Been a, been a tough summer for many departments and you, you certainly had a lot going on.
Thank you.
All right. Our next department is Clerk's Office. Bessie Jo, I know you're on because you've been helping me conduct tonight's meeting. So we'll see if there's any questions for Bessie Jo in the Clerk's Office. Mike, any questions or comments you'd like to pass along?
I don't have any questions or comments. Thanks.
Thanks, Mike. Melanie?
No questions, but thank you for the awesome reporting on lot tax and all of, all of what you've included. It's good to see.
Colby?
Yeah. Thanks for the, the information on the lot tax. I guess, is there anything else you'd want to add to that or any, any things since this report or general about lot taxes?
They came in a lot higher than we anticipated, that's for sure. Nothing really new. We're still, we just have a few stragglers. So hopefully for the December report, we'll have completed numbers. So every project except for one on the priority list was funded.
Well, that's good news. Thanks for the update.
Sure thing.
Bessie Jo, thanks for all the good news. It's really encouraging to see in your report. We appreciate it. All right. Next up is Michelle, Community Development. Michelle, are you on with us tonight?
Yeah, I'm here, Mayor Bob.
Thank you, Michelle. Mike, do you have any questions for Michelle or any comments you'd like to pass along?
None, thanks.
Thank you, Mike. Melanie?
None for me. Thank you.
Thanks, Melanie. Colby?
Um, no, I don't think so. Do you, how are you feeling about the Housing Committee?
I think that they're gaining some traction and we actually have a work session set up with the council in December. So I think that'll be beneficial for the council to meet them and hear kind of their thoughts and where they're going.
Well, good to hear. Thanks.
Yeah, we look, we look forward to that. That was on my mind as well. Colby, thanks for asking that question. And Michelle, it's set after, is it first meeting in December?
I don't know that off the top of my head. I, it's whatever the next work session is. That's the one at 5:30.
No, it's on December. No, no, I'm sorry. I'm wrong.
We'll, we'll talk about that during a future meeting segment. I was just, just curious. But anyway, I'm looking forward to that. December will be here quickly and that'll be great to have that meeting. Okay, on to golf course. Eric McCormick, are you on tonight?
I'm here, Mayor Bob and council.
Thank you, Eric. Mike, do you have any questions or comments you'd like to share with Eric?
None, thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Melanie?
Not at this time. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Melanie. Colby?
None for me. Thanks, Eric.
Thank you.
Eric, this is Mayor Bob. So the course is officially closed, I, I believe, right? I see some little rope lines around the greens and people are, your crew's working to get everything ready for freeze up and snow, correct?
Yeah, our last, our last day was officially Monday or Sunday, November 1st, and it was a really busy day. We've since then have gotten all our snowmold applications applied, the covers. I think we have 12 covers on greens and everything. We actually finished roping and staking the rest of greens today. So we're really wrapping up, getting ready for winter and we're a dog park now and very busy with walkers already.
Good to hear. That was, you know, it was nice that you had, had such good weather the last week of October to be able to do all of that.
Yeah, it's really been a nice, good, we've got a lot done this fall. It's been good for us.
Great. Thank you. So IT, Annette, are you answering questions on that or?
Well, I can try to. I'm not an IT expert, so go for it.
We have a good report from Chris Curtin and Annette said she will answer anyone's questions. We'll do the best we can. Mike, do you have any questions or comments concerning IT?
I don't. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Melanie?
None for me. Thank you.
Colby?
No questions. Thanks.
And I don't have any questions either on that. So we'll go to, I think it's library. Let's see. Yeah, library is next. Meg, are you on tonight?
Yes, Mayor Bob, I'm here. Sorry for the delay.
You're fine. I can, I can hear you. Mike, do you have any questions or comments for Meg?
I don't. Thanks.
Melanie?
None for me. Thank you.
Colby?
Uh, no questions. I, I hope that session that we had, our discussion, was that a week or two ago? I can't even remember anymore. That was really helpful for me and I hope that everyone involved with the library felt that was helpful. So pass thanks along to everyone.
Yes, I will. Thank you so much, Colby, for your involvement. And yes, hard to believe it was only a week ago.
Hey, this is Bob. Yeah, that was a great meeting. I, I think we were all pretty realistic about, you know, we had pretty lofty goals and we made, made some progress, didn't get everything figured out, but we, it was very, it was a very helpful meeting to council and to the city staff. So thanks for, please, when you meet with the board, extend your thanks to them as well.
Yes, thank you so much, Mayor Bob. I will do that.
All right. So our next, yeah, let's see. Our next department report is from Kurt Wolf, Parks and Rec.
And Kurt is out at the area right now. Tara was, is on the line to answer any questions.
Great.
Yes.
Welcome to our meeting tonight. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you.
All right. Questions for Tara on Parks and Rec? Mike, any questions or comments you'd like to pass along?
None, thanks.
Melanie?
No, but thanks for being with us, Tara.
Absolutely.
Colby?
Uh, no questions for me. Thanks for being here, Tara.
No questions for me, Tara, but we're, I know council's been really impressed with all, all of the projects, all of the activities, both in Parks and Rec. It's been a very busy summer and a very busy fall and it looks like you have a lot of stuff planned for this winter. So please tell Kurt we appreciate everything.
I sure will. Thank you.
Our next department is the Police Department. And is Justin on or?
Lack of good cop, I'm always around.
You are here. I should have known, should have known. If I look at my screen, I see your picture up there. All right. So questions for Chief Williams. Mike?
I don't have any questions. Thanks.
Melanie?
So Justin, just, it, it looks to me like potentially our DUIs have gone up over the last few months. Am I, am I correct?
Yes, ma'am, you are. They've gone up. It was kind of an anticipation. We thought that they would actually be more earlier in the summer than what there have been, but overall, yes, we're seeing an increase and we would anticipate the regression to stage three with the winter months and more persons partaking in alcoholic beverages, both external and inside of their own homes, that we would continue that increase.
Thank you very much. Was just curious about that.
You are correct.
Colby?
Uh, no, I don't think I have anything for you, chief. Good to see your face.
Oh, I was gone for two weeks, had a, had a nice trip to Texas. So it was, it was good to see family.
Awesome. Good to hear.
Thanks, Colby.
Chief Williams, no, no questions. I just wanted to pass along a compliment to your department and to Annette and to Tracy Malvich. I ran into one of your officers. It was Seth. I ran into him over at the gym and he, he took five minutes to talk to me about how pleased he is with our new pay structure, some of the incentives for retention. And in, from his perspective as an officer, he feels like it's really working well. So I told him that's what we were hoping for and I know it's a little early on, but it just seems like things are going in the right direction with that. So thanks for your leadership and I wanted to also thank Annette and Tracy for helping us on that.
Absolutely, Mary. It was a definite team effort. The, the staff within my department is very aware of the fact that we have not only a very supportive community, but we have committed supervisors, that we have a committed council. And we're very lucky to live, work, and recreate in this environment in which we do have that public support. And so we will work diligently, continually and every day to make sure that we maintain that trust within our community. So I thank you all for your leadership and for your support on this as well. Thank you.
You're welcome. Our next department is Public Works. Nathan Stewart, are you on with us tonight?
No, Nathan also is away today and so he talked to me this afternoon and asked me if I would try to answer any questions that come up. So I will do that for you.
Thank you, Annette. All right. Annette's going to pinch it on Public Works. Any questions from Mike?
I don't have any questions. Thanks, Bob.
Thank you, Mike. Melanie, questions or comments?
Well, I did have a couple of questions on the Thompson Avenue project that, you know, we can, we can table, but I'll, I'll put them out there. One of the questions I had was whether or not we would have any signage for the safety of children when we did that sidewalk with all that on-street parking? Because I have a feeling that's going to be really, really important, number one. And number two, I, I pulled into one of those parking spaces and it seemed like there was an awful lot of them on street and that they were, in general, shorter than what you would see on the highway or anywhere else. Felt like we were trying to cram more parking in there than we should be. And, and so I'd like to talk about the lengths and whether or not they're standard or not.
Okay, well, I have to answer this pretty technical question, so I'll make note of this to follow up. I can ask you a question on the security parking standard. And if you could send me an email with a little more information about what you're asking about in regards to signage, that would be helpful.
Were you able to hear that, Melanie?
Say that again, sorry?
I'm sorry. I'll try to speak up louder. I asked if you could email me your questions about the children's signage so I can understand a little better what you're looking for there. And then I'll, and I'll follow up with Nathan when he's back on the design standard for the on-street parking. Residential on-street parking may be different than commercial.
Okay. That sounds great. I'll email tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Melanie. Colby?
Nope, don't have any questions. Thanks.
I'm good. All right. According to my agenda packet, that completes department reports. We will now be moving into the public hearing phase of our meeting and that's Agenda Bill 20-305, request approval of an ordinance adopting McCall emergency, emergency powers authority. This is an action item. We're going to start with public hearing. And in our Agenda Bill, it's listed as public hearing testimony. Public was allowed time to submit written comments. Let's see. The public may attend in person to make public testimony. We don't have anyone at the door or in our official meeting site, but I believe, Bessie Jo, we have some comments that were filed on time in writing. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. Did you want Annette to introduce the item first before taking comment or did you want the comments now?
We'll start with an introduction. That's a, that's a great idea. Annette, if you could help me with that and then I will ask the clerk to read if there's like three or four comments and ask them to be read into the record.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Giles, Annette Bicker, city manager. And our attorney, Bill Nichols, is on the line as well if you have questions about the ordinance. And as you'll recall, we have the opportunity or the tool provided to us by Idaho State Code to allow a city to establish an emergency powers authority in our city code. So that the council and myself can respond quickly when certain public health emergencies arise. We did utilize this type of authority back in, over the summer. The council granted a temporary authority, which is almost identical to what's in your packet tonight. We adopted that back in March in response to the state of emergency that was declared by the governor and the president related to. We issued one order under that authority for face covering requirements and that was brought directly to the council for you to debate and approve. I, as city manager, have not issued anything on my own or had to bring anything back to within the seven day time period that the ordinance allowed. That temporary authority expired after 182 days. And so the state law says that if the council feels that this type of authority is important to continue, we would need to follow the normal ordinance adopted. to follow the normal ordinance adoption process to put it into your city code. So back in August, at the end of August, on the 27th, the council determined that it was in the city's best interest to proceed in accordance with the state law to establish the authority, we drafted the updated ordinance, and if you have questions about any of the elements in the ordinance, I'm happy to answer those, as I said, Bill Nichols, our attorney, is on the line, can help answer those, and then Justin's on the line if you have questions about the enforcement provision that's there. The main difference between the prior ordinance and this one is that our, excuse me, our enforcement section put in, we put in the civil penalty aspect instead of a criminal penalty aspect, which was what the council decided earlier this year was more appropriate for our community, so that is in there. We took this draft ordinance to the Planning and Zoning Commission as was required by the law, on October 6th, one, they held a public hearing, one person testified at the public hearing, and they were not in favor of the council adopting this authority. The Planning and Zoning Commission discussed it, and they voted, a majority of them voted to move this forward for your full review tonight, and they recommended that a second public hearing be held, because they were concerned that folks wouldn't normally know to look at the PNC agenda for a public hearing of this type of issue, and thought it was important that the public hearing also be held in front of the council and advertised as such. So, we did advertise in the paper that this would be held tonight on this topic, and I believe Bessie Jo did receive several written comments related to this topic that she emailed out to and will share with you during the public hearing. As Mayor Bob said, nobody is here in person, I don't know if anybody is on the phone wishing to have the guy tonight. And if the council adopts the ordinance, it will become effective upon publication in the newspaper, which would be following the, so if you adopt this tonight, it will become effective on Thursday, November 12th.
Annette, it's really hard to hear you.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm trying to shout, which part should I back up to? Can you hear me better if I'm standing up?
I can hear you better now, you can move that little round speaker over to your desk.
Okay. So how far back do I need to, whoops, actually it's plugged into Bob's computer, so I'll just stand right here.
Oh, the top of it should lift off. Anyway.
Okay, I'm just gonna stand.
Project a little better.
Okay, so, I don't know where you want me to start over.
It was just your last sentence that you fell off.
Okay, so, what I was describing is the effective date of the ordinance, and so if the council adopts the ordinance tonight, it's effective upon publication in the newspaper, which would be next Thursday, November 12th, and if it is adopted, it would be contained in Chapter 9, Title 5 of the McCall City Code. Let's see, oh, I forgot to mention that, along with holding a second public hearing, the Planning and Zoning Commission suggests to council that the duration of any public health order that's issued under this authority should be limited to 45 days, and then have council review it again at that time. So we did include in your packet, um, a couple of options for the duration of the orders.
On the back side of the agenda bill, option one is consistent with stated.
So, um, on the back of your agenda bill, the option, the language that's included in the draft ordinance right now, um, is the duration related to language, I believe, that's consistent with the, how the state does it, is that right, Bill? Hold on one second.
Yeah, it says, use language consistent with state and health district orders.
Okay, so, no, no, I'm gonna back up, so in the current draft of the ordinance that's in the packet, the term of any order right now is described as lasting no more than 180 days from the effective date, and it can be extended upon approval of the council. So then, based on that feedback from Planning and Zoning, you have, we put a couple other options for the duration of these orders, one being that, um, an effective date that would remain in effect until the end of the public health emergency and the vacation of the order by the approval of the city council, which is very similar to what the state and central district health use for their orders. So basically, there's no review until you decide you want to review it, and decide whether to terminate it, so it's a little more open-ended, given the uncertain nature of some of the public health emergencies. The other option we provided to you, based on the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation, is that, um, an emergency order shall include an effective date and a termination date that specified no more than 45 days from the effective date, and can be extended upon approval of the city council, so they felt that when you issue something, you should give more certainty to when you're going to revisit it and potentially cancel it or extend it. So you have a couple options there for whatever you think's appropriate for our community and, um, and this tool. And I think that is everything I was going to mention about the ordinance, and I don't know if Bill Nichols wants to provide some additional comments on the structure of it or the language choices.
So Mayor and Council, the only issue is, um, with regard to the duration piece, is you can decide something else, I mean, you could decide 90 days, 120 days, if you wanted a specific time period, the 45 days was simply the recommendation or suggestion from Planning and Zoning, but the council can determine what that period is, if you want to go with a defined period, so we're not locked into 180 or 45, you can do, you can do 30, you can do 90, whatever you might decide as a council. We just simply provided those alternative language pieces as a means of helping define the discussion. The, and you'll recall that, there was some discussion, I believe, before, when the order, the order came up before for renewal, that you wanted at least some period of time for it to be effective, as opposed to every 30 days sort of thing, having to revisit it. The ordinance as drafted is essentially a tool that you can put in the toolbox, so it's available if and when you need it, as opposed to coming up to something like we had to in March, where we had to create the tool and present it to you. So that's, the reason for the ordinance is to put a tool in the toolbox that, if needed, you can pull out and use as a council, it, there is no accompanying resolution, enacting a new order, or anything else like it, this is just really enabling legislation to create that tool and have it there as part of your regular city code, that's what it is.
Thank you, Bill. Annette, we ready to go to public comment then? We can hear you, so, Bessie Jo, are there three or four written comments?
I think you do. There are six, but because it's a public hearing, I believe that all of them have to be read into the record, because we get, this gave the alternate way for them to be able to, um, to, for their testimony.
Right, thank you, Annette just reminded me, let me formally open the public hearing, and review a couple of things real quickly, we have written comments that will be read, each of them by our clerk, and there is no one in the room to verbally testify, and it's unclear from, to me, reading our agenda bill, were we trying to accommodate any comments on the phone?
Yes, so if somebody has called in to make a comment, we currently have two phone callers, I don't know if they just called in to listen, or if they called in to make a comment. If you would like, I can call out their last four digits of their number and ask if they would like to make a comment.
Let's do that, and then see, see what happens there, and then we'll read the written comments into the record.
Okay, so, phone number ending 4747, did you want to make a comment on this public hearing?
That's just Drew from the Star News here.
Ah, Drew, okay, thank you, and then, um, phone number ending 4838, we did have to mute you, so if you did want to make a comment, you would need to unmute your phone by pressing star six. All right, I don't see that they unmuted, so, um, if they should unmute and try to speak later, we could, um, we could listen to them at that point, they might just be on to listen.
Sounds good, Bessie Jo, thank you for facilitating that, let's go on to the written comments that were submitted for the public hearing.
Okay, the first one is Gary Chandler at 1740 West Fairview Avenue, states, "The lit signs as you enter McCall that state you must wear masks in public places is disgusting. The mask mandate is not a law, people are smart enough to social distance on their own without the local health department slamming them in the face and tearing them like stupid idiots. Eight out of 10 people that wear the mask catch the virus. If masks worked so well, it is, if masks worked so well, why is it increasing when 98% of the people obey like they robots because of the fear the news and the health departments have put on the people?" Sorry about that, I have to read it just as they wrote it, and it sometimes doesn't flow very well, so. The next one is Leonard Ivan Tosh from 839 Homestead Road, McCall, and he writes, "Regarding granting emergency powers to allow the city manager to pass laws without the city council's approval, I am totally opposed. There are enough questionable laws and ordinances already being passed by the city council and Valley County Health. I understand the need to be able to react to the changing COVID circumstances, but that does not excuse illegal unconstitutional actions by the city manager, or for that matter, the city council." The next comment is from Terry Edvelson at 616 North Third, Number 201, McCall, Idaho. And he writes, "Dear Mayor Giles, the saying 'Mother Nature always win' is pertinent today in light of the disjointed national and state of Idaho response to the novel coronavirus COVID-19 public health challenge. Masks like potholes are not partisan. Yet to be discovered virus-caused pandemics and climate change-generated increased incidences of forest fires are essential threats that require managed disaster response. Scientists predict more healthcare challenges and natural disasters can be expected in this and future decades. With this in mind, I am writing in support of the McCall City Council passing legislation giving emergency powers to the city manager in the face of public health and other emergencies that endanger the health and safety of the citizens of McCall. The need for quick response to emergency events are demonstrated by the city of McCall's quick response to COVID-19. Taking the advice of the local medical community, the measures taken by the council in early March have managed to keep community spread of the virus to a minimum level in the city, in spite of McCall being a vacation destination and a refuge for second homeowners escaping urban virus hotspots. The council's response was well in advance of the mask rule passed by the South Central Idaho Public Health imposing a mask requirement for Valley County." Excuse me. According to state of Idaho coronavirus data for October 30, Valley County has the second lowest daily seven-day moving average incidental rate at 8.8, and the lowest cumulative incident rate at 1070.9. The possibilities of needing an immediate response to dangers presented by forest fires and social unrest events emerging in today's divided county speak to the need for the ability of the city of McCall to react immediately toward dangerous events. The seven-day requirement for the city council to be convened and approve an emergency declaration by a city administrator provides sufficient public protection from a misdirected order. Sincerely, Terry Edvelson." The next is Randy Curious from 303 Mather Road, is in favor, states, "I strongly support giving the city manager this power who hopefully will make nonpartisan public health decisions. I would also recommend adding a requirement that, when practical, any emergency declarations be done with a consultation of CDH health professionals. I believe this new ordinance is very important, as certain members of the city council, one in particular, have proven that politics will override their decisions even at the detriment of public health and welfare. It is abundantly clear they have no concept of public health versus personal health. I have completely lost confidence in the leadership of these members." Janet Lord is our next one, she lives at 1255 Elo Road, she writes that she's against, "I'm against such power being given to a single person." Larry Lord, also at 1255 Elo Road, writes that they are against, "No way should such power be given to one person." That concludes the public testimony.
Thank you, Bessie Jo, so I'm looking at my script that was written for the different steps in conducting, properly conducting a public hearing, and before I close out the hearing and the comment period, there's a section called staff rebuttal, so I would like to hear from Annette or anyone else that she would like to talk, if there's any rebuttal or thoughts about some of those critiques that we heard, and some of the comments that we heard in writing.
Thank you, Mayor, I think the only clarification I would make is that, um, the ordinance gives authority to a person in my position to do the first order if needed, but again, it ultimately has to be approved by the city council within seven days, otherwise it's rescinded, so, just a clarification that that would not be a permanent authority granted to me that would be exercised. a permanent authority granted to me that would be exercised outside of your ultimate authority.
Thank you, Annette.
Bob, it's Mike. May I make a comment?
Yes, please, please do.
The first item is, I'm quite certain and as verified by our GIS as well, that Homestead Road is not an address in McCall. So the comments was from Homestead Road, so I don't, that's not a McCall, it was listed as McCall address. So I just, just as far as fact checking goes, unless I'm somehow wrong about that. But the other comment that I wanted to just kind of clarify, I think, and you know, Bill or Annette certainly let me know if this is incorrect, but concept of this ordinance is that if we are in an emergency situation, something that is imminent, it's difficult to get the city council to convene for a meeting, say, if there was an emergency that was happening, there was a chemical spill on the highway or something like this at four o'clock in the afternoon, we needed to take immediate action that would be in favor of the health and safety of our community, that we wouldn't necessarily be able to convene at 4:15 that, at that, that moment in time. And therefore, this emergency orders is such that the city manager can make those decisions at that time, subject to approval by the city council. Is that all, am I, we reading this all correctly, Bill?
Yes, you are.
Okay. I just wanted to kind of clarify just for those out there that may have concerns or questions regarding that in some way that we would be giving, you know, just ultimate control to the city manager and that elected officials would no longer have any say, which is not the case. So it's just point of clarification. Thanks, Bill.
Thanks for pointing that out, Mike. Appreciate it. Any other thoughts related to the public comments before I close out the public comment period from the rest of the council? Hearing none. And Bessie Jo, there has, you haven't received any emails or anyone trying to call you to to verbally testify during this hearing, is that correct?
That is correct.
So based upon that information, I hereby close the official hearing and the testimony is complete. So our next step will be to deliberate based on the facts and information that we've received in our packet and what we've heard this evening and the discussion that we've just completed. Whether or not to move ahead with the ordinance and then there is a, there are two, two or more options, really that the difference between option one and option two is the term of the order and as legal counsel pointed out to us tonight, that we can choose something that makes sense, whether it be 45 days, 90 days, 180 days, some, some number like that. So let me quickly poll the council and I'm going to ask you two questions. I'm, I'm going to assume because we have asked Annette to put this on the agenda and do all the staff work. I'm going to assume that you're still in favor of moving ahead with an ordinance, similar to the one in our packet, if not the same. So that's the first question I'll ask you. And then the second question is what's your recommendation to council for the rest of this for the time period? The term of the order. Mike, I'm going to start with you. Are you still on board with moving ahead with the ordinance as described?
Yes, I am. And I think that this discussion certainly meets the three touch rule as described in our governance manual. That we've seen it, we've discussed it, we've been informed about it, we've received legal opinion. And there's been a fair amount of discussion on it. And then your second question regarding the term of the order. It would seem to me that it would make the most sense to follow what state and health district. To keep our order in line with other entities would make the most sense, I believe.
So under option one, we, in our agenda bill, it says use language consistent with state and health district orders.
Correct.
And just as a clarification, Annette, what does that mean?
Mayor, that means that if a public health emergency order is issued under this ordinance. And then just to clarify, we're not talking about the duration of the ordinance itself. It's just any order that's issued later under the authority. And it will include, shall include an effective date and shall remain in effect until the end of the public health emergency and the vacation of the order by approval of the city council.
Thank you.
Yeah. So Bob, to finish that from my perspective is that following central district health, similar to their health order related to, for instance, masks or whatever unforeseen situation could arise that we would need to, that our city manager would need to act quickly and swiftly to preserve safety and health of our community. That by issuing it until we rescind it, I think from a procedural level makes more sense. And I think it also makes sense to follow what these other bodies are doing.
Thank you.
Clear enough? Yeah.
No, that's clear. What your intent, thank you for your comments. Melanie, you'll be next.
Hi, everyone. I am obviously still on board with this ordinance. I have a little bit different perspective on the timeframe. I feel that we should be discussing and, and talking about any emergency order as often as possible. So my, from my perspective, we owe it to the community to have the shortest term that we, you know, could. And I think 45 days is appropriate.
Great. Colby, what's your thoughts?
I guess one point of order I might have missed it. Did we close the public hearing?
We, yes, we did.
Okay, cool. Yeah, sorry. I was running around frantically. Yeah, I'm in favor of moving forward. I would echo Melanie's concerns as well and probably go a step further and to consider the length of time after the initial issuance of any order. Are we able to shorten that seven day time period? Because I, you know, I guess I, I kind of tend towards some of the concerns of, of the public comments that I don't overly trust the government, as it were, quote unquote. Is it possible to shorten the seven day down to a shorter time period? To, to provide more oversight?
This is Bill. You, you can, you can shorten the time period down, but you have to take into account the time period necessary to be able to post the meeting, agendize the meeting and, and those things. I mean, it's probably, I mean, you can tell us what you want, but it would, my recommendation would be something greater than two days. So that there's enough time for the clerk to properly get the meeting organized, find a, assuming we're back in the days when we can meet together, have a place for the meeting and get things set up so that you can go ahead and have that meeting.
Mayor, may I make a suggestion? So this is found in section seven B, summary enactment is where this language resides. Which is page five of eight in your packet. Right now, the language says, within seven days of the issuance of such an order, the city manager shall present the order to the council for approval, et cetera, et cetera. What you might think about doing if Bill thinks this works is change that sentence to say as soon as possible, but no later than seven days of the issuance of the order, something like that. So we get it to as soon as possible. And that might be a, that might work.
Colby, did you hear Annette's suggestion or edits?
I did. I also saw Bill kind of cringing a little bit at that too.
Okay, I can't see because I have to stand up to talk on the mic.
Go ahead.
He's going.
Go ahead, Bill. What's your thoughts on that?
So I don't like the language as soon as possible. I, I think it'd be better to say not less than so many days nor more than seven days of the issuance. The city manager shall present the order to the city council. Because it's possible to have a meeting the same day if you can find everybody and jump through all the hoops to do it. And, and the fact that it takes extra effort may be okay. I mean, it's your choice as to what you want us to put in there. But I would be more comfortable with a range that sets the minimum period of time that it has to be presented and the maximum is seven days.
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess, you know, my, my concern with that is, you know, who knows what, what could trigger inaction? But you know, severe effects could, could happen, you know, if the, the wrong order was enacted, you know. And there is, there is no decision on that in a really timely manner within a couple of days, you know. I don't, it's hard to imagine what scenario that might be, but I feel like the, if, if we're held to be to, if, you know, the expectation is to, to give the city manager flexibility to, to make, you know, health and safety orders in a timely manner. I think that if it comes down to needing to make those orders in a timely manner, the city council should be held accountable to also, you know, give those orders the blessing, as it were, in a timely manner. And not that seven days is very long, but I, I, I'd like to see that, that range of days.
So, Colby, give us a number that you recommend. We've got four people voting tonight, so we'll need to get on board. At least three or four of us to figure that out. So what's your suggestion for the number of days?
I don't know. What's the, I mean, between 24 hours and seven days, what's, like, what's, what's reasonable, what's practical? And something that, you know, that would.
What I heard, what I heard from, can't remember whether it was Bill or Bessie Jo or Annette, but someone who, who does this kind of stuff, they said three days would be the quickest you could turn around stuff and get all the agendas posted and read all the open meeting law rules, but was, did I hear that correctly, Bill? Was it you or was it Bessie Jo?
And so I think it was me, Mayor. I mean, you can have a meeting sooner than that. Just it's extra work and depending on who's available to do those, those things, you just, you'd have to have a plan to be able to do it quickly.
Bob, can I interject? What if, what if we just tightened it up to, that we want to have the meeting within five, five days? That seemed reasonable to tighten it up a little bit. I mean, certainly we can speak for the current council. Generally speaking, we're available and we make ourselves available. This is important. And certainly in an emergency, it's important. So to Colby's point of tightening up, would it make sense just to make the number of days less than seven?
Less than five, you mean?
Or make it five instead of seven.
Yeah, I mean, switch the number five instead of seven. Colby, would you be okay with that?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with, with that. I, you know, I guess I'd like to kind of hear your thoughts on, on it, you know, I just in, I, I guess you heard my opinion on it. Yeah, five's good.
Oh, sorry, go ahead. Melanie, what's your thoughts? Are you good with five?
I'm good with five, Bob. I, I think I'm a little more concerned with the actual term of renewal.
Yeah, we haven't got to that. We're, I'm trying to just lead us through one issue at a time. So let's pin down the, when it has to be ratified, I call it.
Bob, it's Mike. So if we do the five days, keep in mind the language is currently written, it says within five days. So we're not, that's the absolute maximum would be then five days, but the intent would be on the part of the city manager and on the part of the council would be if we were in some emergency situation. I mean, in effect, it is as soon as possible. The intent is that, that it will occur within, you know, no later than. So it could certainly occur sooner, but we're just, and I, I agree with Colby, why not tighten it up? So that's where I throw out the five days.
Okay. Sounds like we got agreement. I'd support that. Five days. And you're right, if you look back to last March, I remember sitting in this building at about three in the afternoon. And by six o'clock that night, the council made a decision that was under these emergency powers. So you're right, sometimes things can happen faster. So let's set that on the shelf as tentative agreement, five, less than five days, the language would be. Now let's go back to the duration. Do we want 45 days, 60 days, 90 days, or no, or no day limit? We've heard a couple of, couple of versions. Let's see, let me see if I can summarize. We heard one council member, I think it was Mike, that said comfortable with the way central district health does it, which is the, the emergency action's in place until we send it. Melanie, I believe you put out a date of, was it 30 days or 45?
I'd be okay with 30 or 45, but I do believe we should touch it often.
Okay, that's right. Thanks for summarizing your language on that and intent. Colby, what was your thoughts on the number of days?
I agree with Melanie. I think that it's, it's good to revisit it. And if it's an ongoing thing, such as our current pandemic, you know, that, that conversation tends to be pretty short, but it's a, it is a conversation and it is acknowledged and decisions are made. So I, I would be happy with that 45 days as well.
Okay, so here's my input. We need, need to make a decision tonight on this and I, I'd be comfortable with no, with no date. But we need to reach consensus. At least have three of us voting for this. So I would suggest we go with 45 days. I think you're good.
And Bob, if I might add, just since we don't have many times to converse and I don't mean to interrupt, but I would say, you know, one, if, if, if we follow that of the health district, county, et cetera, and having that without a specific day that we revisit, we, that would not negate us from having the right to revisit at every single meeting during the emergency. So in that situation, we could readdress it every time if we wanted, just for the record. I think I'm correct in that, Bill. And then, but if we go with 45 days, I'm, I'm fine with that too. We're just, it just means that we're going to put it on the agenda within 45 days to revisit and it's going to have a specific timeframe that we're going to. Which at the same time, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, Bill, but we could still revisit every meeting up until 45 days, right? but we could still revisit every meeting up until 45 days, right? Just put it on the agenda?
That's correct. And then even with a longer period of time, you could always bring it up and say the emergency's over. We want to rescind the order.
Yeah, so from my standpoint, I'm fine either way as far as consensus goes. But I think is so that we're all clear that if we were looking at following what the other agencies have, no, in no way does that negate the ability of council to revisit that every meeting. But if we want to put a date on it, and that seems to be where Colby and Melanie are, I'm certainly on board with that.
Okay.
Looking at this from the same, with the same, the same viewpoint and trying to look out for our community.
Yeah, no, I, I agree with you, Annette. I'm, I'm, I'm reading it the same way you are. If we want to talk about it each meeting, like we have been doing with COVID-19, that's certainly appropriate. And every emergency will be different. There's stuff that we don't know, have no clue about what we'll be dealing with. But thanks for that insight. Let's move ahead to, so I'm looking at my script here, recommended action. We've finished the public hearing. Do we have an ordinance number, Bessie Jo?
Uh, yes. But first of all, did, I didn't quite capture, did you, did you nail down those, those two timeframes? Is it, is it within five days and then up to 45 days or is it up to 30 days?
Okay, so let me summarize that changes that we have made. It's up to five days for the first part. I can't remember which section.
So that's section seven B summary enactment would be changed to read within five days.
Did you hear that, Bessie Jo?
I did.
Okay, and then the second part is the term is 45 days.
Is section seven D term of order would be revised to say shall be no more than 45 days from the effective date.
But that allows us to review it several times. Is that correct, Annette? If we have to. All right, so with that, can you give me an ordinance number and we'll?
Uh, yeah, I have an ordinance number. So Bill, when, when they go to, to adopt it, do they need to include those things? Or because they discussed it and came to consensus, the, they don't, do they need to state them within the motion?
So here's, here's what you want to do. You have an ordinance in front of you that needs to be amended. And a proposed ordinance that needs to be amended. So the, the first motion is to amend the draft ordinance and you give it the number to change section seven, the time period in seven B to not more than five days. And to change the time period in seven D to no more than 45 days. So that's the first motion is to amend the draft ordinance. Then you can have the motion to suspend the rule and so forth. Read by title only the usual motion. This ordinance number such and such as amended. Then you'll read by title only. Then the council will move to adopt ordinance number such and such as amended and have a vote. Okay? So really, three motions.
Yep, I think we got, we got that. So let's start with the first motion, the amendment to the existing, to the ordinance that's in our packet.
Ordinance 995.
Okay, ordinance number 995. I need someone from council to make a motion and then a second. The motion would, would read as Bill stated. It's ordinance number 995 as amended, and we would need to read those amendments as Bill stated.
Bob, it's Mike. I make a motion to amend the draft ordinance 995, section seven B to not to exceed five days, and section seven D not to exceed 45 days.
Second.
Thank you, Mike and Colby. Did we capture that correctly, Bill?
Yes.
Thank you, Bill. Motion has been made and seconded to modify ordinance number 995.
Section seven.
Section seven B and section seven D. All right. May I have a roll call vote to, on that motion to modify this, this ordinance?
Councilmember Machesek?
Yes.
Councilmember Nielsen?
Yes.
Mayor Giles?
Yes.
Councilmember Holmes?
Yes.
Motion passes. Our next item under the recommended actions for this topic is to suspend the rules read by title only, one time only, ordinance number 995 as modified. As amended, thank you, Bill. One time only, ordinance number 995 as amended.
I mean, we suspend the rules and read by title only, one time only, ordinance number 995 as amended.
My second.
Thank you, Colby. Thanks, Mike. A motion has been made and seconded to suspend the rules, read by title only, one time only, ordinance number 995 as amended. May I have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Nielsen?
Yes.
Councilmember Machesek?
Yes.
Councilman, uh, Mayor Giles?
Yes.
Councilmember Holmes?
Yes.
Ordinance 995 as amended. An ordinance of the city of McCall Valley County, Idaho, establishing emergency powers, setting forth the authority, purpose, and intent, definitions describing public health emergency orders, process for enacting public health emergency orders, providing for exclusions, providing for suspension of services and deadlines, force majeure clause, penalty, providing a savings and severability clause, and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Bessie Jo. Our third item is adopt, is to make a motion and second and then vote on the following action. Adopt ordinance number 995 as amended to establish emergency powers authority in the city of McCall, approve the publication of the summary and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents.
Bob, I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance number 995 to establish emergency powers authority in the city of McCall, approve the publication of the summary and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents.
Thank you, Melanie.
As amended.
I think that was Colby.
As amended, sorry.
Colby, do you second it?
That was amended second, yeah.
Yep, thank you. All right. Motion has been made and seconded to adopt ordinance number 995 as amended to establish emergency powers authority in the city of McCall, approve the publication of the summary and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Holmes?
Yes.
Councilmember Nielsen?
Yes.
Mayor Giles?
Yes.
Councilmember Machesek?
Yes.
Um, Mayor and Council, if I can get you to make one more motion. And, and that would be to amend the ordinance summary for publication to match the amendments that were made to the ordinance.
So moved.
Do you have a second? All right, thank you, Colby and Melanie. Motion has been made and seconded to amend the publication of summary to match the ordinance as amended, ordinance number 995 as amended. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Nielsen?
Yes.
Councilmember Holmes?
Yes.
Mayor Giles?
Yes.
Councilmember Machesek?
Yes.
Motion carries. Bill, are, are we good on that?
Yes.
Hey, thanks for your help. This is, this is fairly complicated tonight. I really appreciate you keeping us on the straight and narrow on that. All right, I think that concludes that agenda, Bill. Good work, everybody. Let me find my, let me find my agenda. Oh, I got it. Thank you, Annette. Okay, so we're now on to the business agenda. We've got two items. Request approval of purchase of the Element software, which is a contract agreement, and then request another agenda bill, request for approval of contract for services with Falvey's LLC. We'll start with agenda bill 20 dash 307. Request approval of a purchase of Element software and contract agreement.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Michelle Gurnevault, Community and Economic Development Director at the city. The item in front of you tonight is to look at a software for us to better manage our planning and zoning permits as well as our building permits. As you know, we've had a record number of permits this year and it only seems to be continuing. We've been actually looking at this for several years. And what we're using right now is a kind of an antiquated spreadsheet. What this allows us to do is to provide better communication both internally as well as externally. We want to move to online applications and submittals. And this also ties into our GIS system as well as the Public Works Department that uses Elements as well. So there are some savings in using the same software and there's some compatibility issues. We evaluated a number of software programs and this was really the one that I think will work the best for our organization and the public. It also allows a lot of efficiency for our building official who is managing right now. For one person, he's managing a lot of permits. And so this is just kind of another way for us to kind of keep with our staffing levels, but kind of also utilize technology and hopefully better improve communication and customer service.
Thank you, Michelle. Council questions for Michelle on this agenda item. Mike?
Um, so it sounds like it's thoroughly researched and in your budget?
Yeah, so we did, um, we, we've been looking at this. And then we also have an internal process called the CPE Committee. And their job is specifically made up of different people within the various departments. And they're looking at how do we make kind of basic processes at the city more efficient? And how do we utilize technology? So it went through, we started this process before that group even got together. But then this, um, this, this piece of it went through that whole process and they made a recommendation to go ahead and purchase it. I know it seems like a kind of a big price tag, but I think probably the time to purchase it is now. Um, the annual upkeep is a lot less. And so it's kind of a one-time expense. And this year we have the revenues because they kind of far exceeded our budget expectations. So, or it was actually kind of technically last year. But we want to get this up and rolling. So we've been working with them on, on a timeline so that we could hopefully get this rolling for the next building season. So we're kind of much better prepared to deal, to deal with that.
That all sounds great. Yeah, it sounds, sounds good. Thanks.
Melanie?
I really can't think of any questions. It looks like it all works together really well. And if you guys have been researching it, I'm good.
Thanks, Melanie, Colby.
Yeah, it sounds good to me. It looks like there's a $4,000 annual subscription, I guess, just to clarify a financial commitment.
Correct. And I think we're currently, currently we're using an iWorks program at kind of a pretty basic reduced rate. And I think we're paying about 2,000 annually to keep that rolling. So it's a little bit more, you know, than we're currently paying, but it's, it has a lot more bells and whistles. So I think it's going to be definitely worth it.
Well, go ahead and ring those bells.
I know, this is exciting stuff.
And I have no further questions on this. So the recommended action is to approve purchase contract for Element software and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents. So I'll look for a motion in a second.
It's Mike. I'll make a motion to approve purchase contract for Element software and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents.
Second, Bob.
All right, thank you both. A motion has been made and seconded to approve purchase contract for Element software and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Machesek?
Yes.
Councilmember Holmes?
Yes.
Mayor Giles?
Yes.
Councilmember Nielsen?
Yes.
Motion carries. So that's approved. Our next request is agenda bill 20 dash 309, request for approval of a contract for services with Falvey's LLC. And that's Brown Park.
Okay, Mayor Kara Woods is on the line still to present this item and I can help her answer questions as well.
Thank you. Kara, if you could, could help us, just give us a quick overview. I think we've been pretty well briefed on this, but we would love to hear from you how, how this fits into our goals down there at Brown Park.
Sure. Um, so Kurt got me up to speed here on, on what he's looking for. Currently Falvey is, LLC is working down in Brown Park shoreline slope stabilization project. They're doing very well. It's about a third of the way through. And Kurt goes down every day when he can, just to make sure he's very pleased with their progress. What he's asking for is just since the contractor is already at Brown Park and equipment is there, they're staged there, to go ahead and, and to fund the relocation of the existing playground structure. Um, I'm going to share my screen with you here so you could see a map here that he showed. The red section that you see is the current playground footprint. And so what he's proposing is that the blue section is then graded and cleaned out so that construction can begin as soon as possible next year after snow thaws and the, the ground has time to absorb all the water. And Kurt really feels that having Falvey already there in place is cost savings, not having to move them out and bring somebody else in. And, yeah, I'm open for any questions that you all might have.
Thank you, Tara. It seems, seems like there's a, it's a pretty good, yeah, pretty good summary on our, our agenda bill as well on what, what Kurt was thinking, but thanks for explaining that. Questions? Uh, Mike, we'll start with you.
Nope, done a handle on it. Thanks.
Thank you, Mike. Melanie?
So one question I was just thinking of is, were we planning on removing the play structure this winter anyway? Or is this going to be kind of a loss to the little kids for the winter?
Well, actually, the playground structure is already removed this time. The structure was 25 years old. There's been a lot of updates and new rules and regulations. It was not compliant with ADA law. And so and you'll notice that the footprint is quite a bit bigger, so that's actually changed as well, as far as the space needed. The playground that's proposed will be going through all the P and Z processes to be approved this coming winter. So we'll be doing a lot of that work while the snow is on the ground, with hope that when it's gone, that we can now and it's all graded, that we can now then start to put it back.
Okay, great. Thank you, Tara.
Yeah.
Thanks, Tara. Colby, questions?
I swear that playground is less than 25 years old, was less than 25 years old.
It happens quick.
Yeah, apparently so. I guess I'm just getting old. Yeah, I don't have any questions. It all makes sense to me. Thanks.
Thank you, Colby. I think thanks for that summary and answering our questions, Tara. I think we're good with this.
Okay.
The recommended actions printed in our agenda under this agenda bill, so I look for a motion in a second, please.
Bob, I'll make a motion to approve the contract for services with Falvey's LLC plus a 12% change order amount to grade and prepare its site for new play structure and pathway realignment to be installed in the spring and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents.
Mike, second? Thank you, Melanie. Thank you, Mike. A motion has been made and seconded to approve the contract services for Falvey's LLC plus a 12% change order amount to grade and prepare site for the new play structure and pathway realignment to be installed in the spring and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Holmes?
Yes.
Councilmember Machazek?
Yes.
Mayor Giles?
Yes.
Councilmember Nielsen?
Yes.
Motion carries. So...
All right, thank you all very much.
Tara, you can share the good news with Kurt when you see him, Nick.
I sure will, when he comes back. Thank you.
Thanks for joining us tonight. All right, our next item is a regular standing item, and it's the COVID-19 update.
Okay, seems that I'm up again. Justin Williams, Chief of Police, Mayor, Council. It's been a busy two weeks for the state of Idaho and for the city of McCall in regards to COVID-19. For many months during this, it's been a redundancy of merely giving numbers and the status quo. However, on October 27th, things have changed. The state of Idaho, under a mandate from the governor's office and the health manager, regressed to stage three from stage four. So I've got my notes here that I'll be reading from. If you have questions at any point in time, please do not hesitate to ask me those questions. Idaho was in what was known as the red zone rates for COVID-19, as put forward by the CDC and the federal government, in that we were at, as of two weeks ago, 101 new cases per 100,000 persons. That was the seventh highest rate in the United States at that time. Our positive rate stood at 10.1% in testing, and that was the second highest rate in the United States. And those were at the issuance of the order on October 27th, so we regressed to stage three. What that means within the order is that indoors, events must be less than 50 people. You can have no more than 50 people at events. Bars and restaurants must be seated only, no standing. So within a bar or within a restaurant, you cannot be standing up. You must be seated, and social distancing will be strictly enforced. There was no change to sporting events, such as high school sports, basketball, volleyball, football, those things. Church or political gatherings are still allowed, however, they must maintain social distance. Physical distance and sanitization is still being required. So within that order, there were recommendations that... and mandates that the state has made. In particular, within that order, there was a section that said employers shall. That was something that the Emergency Operations Center, myself, the Incident Command Team, reviewed and determined what would be the best action for the city of McCall. Particularly, employers shall ensure social distancing and establish measures to meet that social distancing criteria. You must provide adequate sanitation stations for staff and customers, and you must continue to disinfect surfaces that are routinely touched on a regular basis. So what that meant was that the EOC met on October 27th, and we determined that the best action would be to develop an addendum to the original City of McCall Action Plan for Rebound Idaho. If you recall, we established that protocol and that plan of action back in May, and that outlined what our process and our protocols were going to be for the city to reopen and continue to provide city services. We identified the areas that needed to be addressed to ensure that we continue to provide city services while maintaining a safe and positive environment for our staff and to ensure business continuity in order to reduce possible infections within the city facilities. So the action plan was completed with assistance from the EOC here in town, and it was sent to the department heads for review on the morning of October 30th, and it was submitted to all staff on the afternoon of October 30th. And what I will do now is hit the highlights of what that particular order is. The purpose of the memorandum was to outline the adjustments, and so these are the highlights of what became what went into effect October 31st. All employees and customers are maintained at least six feet of physical distance whenever possible. City facility occupancy will not exceed one person per 64 square feet of area. Now, while that number may sound arbitrary, that was actually something that was in the governor's order, and so we're ensuring that we have at least 64 square feet of area for each person. No in-person, face-to-face, interdepartmental socialization will be allowed. Unfortunately, we're not going to be able to, for example, come over to City Hall and hang out with finance and discuss things with them. Video calling may be used to continue inter-office social communications, and department heads will establish and maintain work pods for their respective departments. Remote or telework will be promoted when possible. We've moved back to a telework section, and the department heads are responsible for creating a staffing model to ensure business continuity, inclusive of, but not limited to, the rotation of staff, a statement of purpose to the customers, and the identification of affected services, if any. Now with that, I charged the department heads with providing me a document advising what their staffing protocols would be to ensure business continuity should something happen within their department. Many of the departments that are located in City Hall are able to work remotely, some more than others, some less than others. Public Works, the Police Department, Parks, many of those are not able to work remotely, so we've continued. However, there are staffing measures and scheduling that is being put into place to ensure that there is as little as possible overlap with employees during this continued pandemic. Many of the departments within City Hall are rotating on a basis if they can work from home and work remotely. Some employees work remotely one week, the next week the other employees come in and work inside. But we're still ensuring that there is a minimum of at least one representative from each department in City Hall at all times during normal business hours, so that we can do that. It's important because if someone within the city becomes affected in a particular department and you're having face-to-face meetings, that means that multiple people would have to be quarantined, and services from that particular department would be unable to be delivered, and that city service to our constituents, our residents, our visitors would suffer. So we're taking extraordinary steps to ensure that that does not happen. Back to my little memorandum here as I flip through. Mask use. Masks must cover the nose and mouth. They must be worn indoors when interacting with others. They may be removed when indoors if you're physically isolated within an office building and are not interacting with others. What's that... What that means is particularly in my office, in the Police Department, if I'm within my office and there's no one else with me, I do not have to wear the mask. Now, here's another one, that they must be worn outdoors if you're unable to maintain six feet of physical distance. So for Parks and Rec, for Public Works, if they are unable to maintain six feet of physical distance while they're doing their work, the golf course, whatever it may be, then they must continue to wear a mask. No in-person meetings are to be held unless virtual options are not available. In-person meetings will maintain a minimum of six feet of physical distance between each participant, and these protocols are to remain in effect until another rebound stage change is mandated by the governor. Now, what we did was the original protocols and for this action plan, as I said, were initiated in May, I believe, of 2020, and so we created an addendum to add to this and notified all city staff. The department heads are working actively to coordinate this with their staff, and I believe that this week has worked out fairly well. We haven't had too many glitches. The EOC continues to operate. We continue to discuss. We work closely with Human Resources, with Public Works and Parks, who are responsible for our personal protective equipment. Annette and I and Erin stay in contact on a regular basis to ensure that it is communicated effectively to the public, what we are doing, and communicated to the staff, so that they are well aware and informed of our situation and what it is that we're doing to address it. So that's the update that I have at this point in time. Should you have questions, I'm available.
Thank you, Chief Williams. Questions for the chief? Mike?
No, no questions. Thanks.
Melanie?
None for me. Thanks for the great update.
Colby?
None for me. That was a really good update. I think you answered some questions I didn't even know I had.
Chief, thanks a lot. Keep up the good work on that.
I've got to give credit where credit is due. The EOC, our structure that we have in place, these people have stepped up to the plate. Each one of them has a particular role. They have an expertise that others do not have, that I do not have. I'm merely the voice, but it has definitely been teamwork, as usual. I can't say enough about the support that we have from the staff and from all personnel within the city. And so, you know, while you say thank you to me, I want to pass that along to all those that have been involved, because it could not be done without them. We were able to pull this together in a matter of two days and have it on paper, ready to go for review. So we're getting... Unfortunately, we're getting pretty good at this, so let's hope that we don't have to go through another one.
Well, we appreciate it. Please pass along our thanks to all involved.
Yes, sir.
Annette has kept me brief every Wednesday, and I've just been really impressed with how quickly we've responded to changes, so thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you all.
Annette, any other comments on COVID-19? All right, our next item is to review upcoming meeting schedule.
Okay. In your packet, you have the upcoming meeting schedule. A couple of things have come up since this was published and put out in your packet, so I would like to touch on those first. As Councilmember Nielsen mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, we do have a joint wastewater advisory group meeting scheduled now for November 9th at 9:00 a.m. And that's not a full council meeting, so typically wouldn't be on your upcoming meeting schedule, but I know that's of big interest to the council, so I'll just mention it. The second thing I would like to mention is that you're meeting Tuesday, November 10th at 6:00 p.m., joint with the county commissioners about the Idaho Department of Land Endowment lands. We originally had scheduled that to be held at the Golf Course Clubhouse as the physical location because of the number of staff participating from the county. And if you read the newspaper today, you would have seen an article that the three county commissioners were have tested positive for COVID. And so in conversations today, and Bessie Jo can certainly chime in here. Bessie Jo and Doug Miller, the county clerk, got their heads together about the meeting, and it was determined by the county that one of the commissioners will be eligible to participate in person, which is important because the open meetings law, as you know, requires one elected official to be present at the physical location of the meeting, and that we're able to accommodate some public if they arrive. So one county commissioner will be present, and then someone from our council will need to be present, and then we'll have Bessie Jo there. And so we decided that it made more sense to have that meeting physically located here in Legion Hall instead of at the Golf Course Clubhouse. So an amended agenda for that meeting went out this afternoon regarding that, so I just want to make sure you see that in your email. And then lastly, what's not on here, and I will have Bessie Jo and Bill speak to this more. I received Councilmember Tom Sowers' resignation from the council this afternoon, and that resignation was forwarded to all of you in your email inbox, if you haven't had a chance to see that. And that's effective today. And so Bessie Jo and Bill Nichols and I have talked about what... and looked at the governance manual and everything about what is the process that we would start tomorrow to advertise for that vacant position and begin the process to have the council select a replacement member. So we'll be putting special meeting dates on your calendar regarding that. And Bessie Jo, did you want to speak about that, since you've been through this process in the past and have organized these appointment schedules for the council previously?
Sure, yeah. So we will get it in the paper next Thursday. It'll run for two weeks. So after the two-week period, we will want to have a council meeting for the council to interview said applicants and then decide on who you would like to appoint. So if you guys have some dates, if you can look at your calendars, we can maybe set a tentative date. I would like to be able to put it in the advertisement of when that interview would be, so that people could be able to plan on being available for an interview. Of course, it would be done virtually. The council meeting would be just like any other council meeting, with one member of the council in Legion Hall with myself, and and then we could conduct those interviews. So where you all can conduct those interviews. So two weeks from today is the 19th. I suppose that that would be... I'm sorry, it won't even go in the paper until the 12th, so two weeks after that. Let me look at a calendar here.
That would probably be the Thanksgiving week. I would imagine they'd want to do it after that.
Yeah, so it would run the 12th and the 19th, and then the following week would be Thanksgiving week. So if you would want to do interviews, that would give you Thanksgiving week to review the applications, and then you could conduct your interviews the week. the week of December 30. There is a regular council meeting on the 3rd, so we could plan for you to do them tacked onto that, or you could have them independent of that. Is there any?
Well, when you say tough on. Yeah, that would be okay if we had a meeting like a week ago or two weeks ago. Our short, you know, shortest meeting, 6:30. But if we had a meeting agenda that was to run till 9 o'clock, I don't think that would be wise to tack that on. So let's look at, you know, how brief the meeting is scheduled for that December date. I'm not saying I'm not saying tonight, but as we do our research starting tomorrow on that, we just need to be paying attention to that.
I agree, Bob.
Sure. Do you do you want to? Do you want to look at a date that week, just to to add an additional date?
I wouldn't be opposed to having a special meeting for interviews. That way, we would be able just to focus on that. And that would probably be a little, it would help keep everything a little shorter.
Yeah.
I agree.
That makes a lot of sense. I don't know what other committees you all serve on that week, but just coordinate with Bessie Jo. Some of you have like urban renewal meetings early in the month, others are on other committees. But I think Colby's suggestion is a good one. It's an important, it's an important process, and we want to focus on doing a good job on selecting.
Yeah, I mean, either like maybe we have a city council meeting on the 3rd at 5:30. What about on Wednesday or Friday, say at 5:30?
I think that would be good. How does Wednesday, Wednesday, the 2nd at 5:30, does that work for everybody's calendar?
Works for me.
That works for me. Melanie and Colby?
I'm good.
Yep, good for now. I'll know the day before or a couple hours before. Schedule it.
Okay, I we I'll work with Aaron. We'll get a press release out tomorrow, and and we'll have the application posted on the website that people can apply. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. The other item I would point out that is not listed on the schedule in your packet, but we have tentatively put on the November 20 special work session our annual training with ICrim on ethics for everyone. And then we've asked them to do a special portion related to the functioning of a library board v. the V. the city council structure and the city man, city structure. As you know, we have three new library board members that are very new to all of this. And so we felt it was important that if we were going to have our ICrim folks presenting, it'll be a virtual training to you all, that we could have a small segment devoted to that and invite the library board to join us and get their training on how things work. You know, in terms of the technicalities of law and the structure of libraries in Idaho. So that's what we have planned for the 20th. And then, as Michelle mentioned earlier in the meeting, she had planned to have the Housing Advisory Committee come to a council meeting to do a work session with you, and that will happen on December 17. Right now, your schedule shows the public art plan update, but that is being moved. And so that's the other change here for your for your notes. Do you have any additional items or anything you would like to add to our list for future meeting? Okay, I think it's. There anybody speaking up, so we'll get that updated for your next packet. And like I said, November 10, which is next Tuesday, 6 o'clock, is a virtual meeting joint with the commissioners. So please check your email for that small agenda packet and agenda notice that Bessie Jo sent out this afternoon. And perhaps, I don't know if you want to talk about who will be physically present. Mayor or?
So. Okay, so. Thanks, Annette. This is this is Mayor Bob. I will volunteer to do it under one condition. I I'm going to have a medical professional consulted by the city advise me because I think the the one person that the county has assigned, I believe it's only like nine days after they've been tested. So I'm not sure that meets CDC protocol, and I don't really want to put myself at risk. So I will research that with with the city's help. And if they agree that that time period is following CDC guidelines, then I will serve as the person in the in the basement here. If that's not, then I will not do that, and I would not ask any anyone from the city to do that. So yes, we would not be able.
We we could most definitely cancel it or delay it or whatever you all want. It's it's your meeting, and if you want to. To postpone, you could.
Yeah, it's really not our meeting. It's their meeting. But I I hear what you what you're intending in that. And I I just don't think we should be taking any risk on that. If. My experience has been with, you know, other incidents throughout the U.S. is that that quarantine period is longer than eight or nine days. So I I would like someone to help me with that, whether we need to talk to Dr. Urban or whoever else the city uses to advise us. And if and if their advice is a longer time period, then I'm not gonna, like I said earlier, I'm not going to serve in that role in person, and I'm not going to ask anyone else on the city council or within the city. Meaning we would delay the meeting.
Fair enough.
We'll try to figure that out tomorrow, and if there is a change, we will update everybody to that change.
I agree. Thanks, Bob.
You're welcome. All righty, with with that, I think we're ready for a motion to adjourn. Mike, motion to adjourn. Is there a second? I think I think there was. I heard two voices, all in favor of adjourning.
All right.
The meeting. Aye?
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed to adjournment? Say nay. The motion carries. Everyone have a good and safe rest of their week, and thank you for your hard work tonight. We will be talking to you soon.
Thanks, everyone. Good night, everybody.